To the October 13, 2014 meeting of the Florissant City Council, would you please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Egan.
Here.
Caputa.
Here.
Shildroth.
Here.
Hanky.
Here.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt. Hernandez. Lee. Jones.
Let the record show that a quorum is present. Before we begin, if anyone would like to make a comment or speak at the hearing from citizens portion of the meeting, I would ask that you please pick up a speaker's card located on the table next to the entrance of the chambers. Item number three, approval of the minutes. The meeting minutes from the executive meeting minutes of September 22, 2014, Mr. Hanky makes a motion to approve these minutes, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The meetings are approved. Special presentation, welcome to the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce. Your Honor?
Mr. John Voight, the chairman of the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. One of the things the board wanted to do this year is to honor the eight cities that represent our Chamber of Commerce, and this month happens to be Florissant. So what we do is we advertise and promote in our newsletter. There's a nice article and pictures of the events and happenings that's going on in our newsletter on our website. We're also coming here to present a plaque, and then the mayor is going to speak Wednesday at our luncheon. Correct. You're gonna be, okay. And a few other representatives, and tell us a little bit of happenings about the city. And we just want to, as a chamber, for your continued support of what we do, and the businesses, and the citizens, and everything that represents who we are, and for your constant support, and also for one other thing that's going off and helping us with our business fair every year. That's a big, big thing for us, and it's very successful, and we appreciate that. So just another little plaque of thanks and support for the city, and we hope to continue a long relationship.
Carolyn?
Yes, I would just like to say, you know, to the mayor, the city council, we so appreciate the city of Florissant and their support. You know, this chamber started out as the Florissant, well, actually, the Florissant Chamber of Commerce, so the roots are very deeply in the city. And although we've expanded to include seven other cities in our membership, we just want you to know how much we appreciate your continuing support of our chamber. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate this. We're looking forward to seeing you guys at the meeting on Wednesday. Thanks.
All right, we shall continue hearing from citizens. Seeing none, we'll move along. Item number six. Communication. There is no communication. Item number seven, public hearings. Public hearing 1410026.
Notice is hereby given that the city council of the city of Florissant will hold a public hearing on the proposed budget for the city of Florissant, including the general fund revenue, general revenue fund, capital improvement fund, park improvement fund, sewer lateral fund, and the property revitalization fund for the fiscal year beginning December 1, 2014, and the council chambers at 9:55 Ruth St. Francois on Monday, October 13, 2014, at 7:30 PM. All interested persons are invited to attend the public hearing and may present their views concerning the proposed budget. Anyone with special needs should contact the city clerk at least five days before said public hearing by calling 839-7630 or TDD 839-5142.
Thank you. Mr. McDaniel's welcome, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Randy McDaniel, Director of Finance for the city of Florissant. The mayor and staff began working on the budget back in the end of July, was presented to the council on September 22, and it was posted to the website the following day. The budget contains a recommendation of $33 million in expenditures spread over five funds, and in the front of the budget is a transmittal letter that provides additional information on some of the items in the budget, and I look forward to discussing it in further detail at the various work sessions. Thank you.
Any member of the council? Seeing none. Before we close this public hearing, is there any member of the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Mr. Hernandez moves that the public hearing be closed, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda, old business. Second readings. Bill 9033. Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a second, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Ordinance approving an appropriation of a total of $99,200 from the general revenue fund, $80,000 to account number 4910 salaries police, and $19,200 to account number 4913 benefits police to fund additional overtime for the police department.
I will make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk?
Ordinance approving an appropriation of a total of $99,200 from the general revenue fund, $80,000 to account number 4910 salaries police, and $19,200 to account number 4913 benefits police to fund additional overtime for the police department.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bill 9033 passes and becomes ordinance 80798079. New business. Board appointments. Scene. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reappoint Carl Chapell to the Disability Awareness Commission.
That motion is made by Mr. Shildroth, seconded by Mr. Lee. All in favor? Aye.
I'd like to reappoint the following individuals to the senior commission, Ruth Azar, Corrine Denizek, and Florence Klinger.
Mr. Shildroth moves for approval, seconded by Ms. Pagano. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Any appointments are made. Bills for first reading. Bill 9034.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment for Mission Hills Development DBA GMT Auto Sales to B5 Ordinance Number 6166 as amended by rescinding special use ordinance number 7550 as amended, located at 365 North Highway 67, and B5 Ordinance Number 5877 as amended, located at 620 Charbonneer, and consolidating 225 365 North Highway 67 and 620 and 624 Charbonneer into one car leasing establishment and allowing for signage.
I will make a motion for a second reading, and it's seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance to authorize an amendment for Mission Hills Development DBA GMT Auto Sales to B5 Ordinance Number 6166 as amended by rescinding special use ordinance number 7550 as amended, located at 365 North Highway 67, and B5 Ordinance Number 5877 as amended, located at 620 Charbonneer and consolidating 225 and 365 North Highway 67 and 620 and 624 Charbonneer into a one car leasing establishment and allowing for signage.
I'll make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Poll the council.
Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, will you read the bill for the third time?
Ordinance to authorize an amendment for Mission Hills Development DBA GMT Auto Sales to B5 Ordinance Number 6166 as amended by rescinding special use ordinance number 7550 as amended, located at 365 North Highway 67, and B5 Ordinance Number 5877 as amended, located at 620 Charbonneer and consolidating 225 and 365 North Highway 67, and 620 and 624 Charbonneer into one car leasing establishment and allowing for signage.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council for the final vote.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee. Jones.
Yes.
Bill 9034 passes and becomes ordinance 808080. Bill 9035.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $16,000, $8,000 from account number 0628 merchandise, and $8,000 from account number 0560 professional services, 0650, sorry, to account number 60610 salaries golf to cover anticipated shortfalls and wages for the golf course.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, Mr. President, and for the people that are home, the next seven bills deal with very small transfers within the different funds. We've had a very good budget year, administration and staff has done a great job controlling expenditures, and this is just some minor changes to get us through the end of November. So I would support three readings on all these tonight so that they have what they need to get done through. So I would move for a second.
Mr. Lee moves for a second reading on this bill, and that is seconded by Mr. Hanky. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $16,000, $8,000 from account number 0628 merchandise, and $8,000 from account number 0650 professional services to account number 0610 salaries golf to cover anticipated shortfalls and wages for the golf course.
Mr. Jones makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? Seeing none, a voice vote, please.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Clerk, please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $16,000, $8,000 from account number 0628 merchandise, and $8,000 from account number 0650 professional services to account number 0610 salaries golf to cover anticipated shortfalls and wages for golf course.
Prior to a final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Mr. Engelhardt?
John Engelmeier. 1281 Graham Road. Three readings tonight. I don't know whether any of you have done your homework, but obviously, it doesn't appear that it has happened. I pulled up the budget information as of September 30 from your records, the city records. We've taken in approximately $373,000 of the $675,000 budget for the golf course, which represents 45 percent. Our expenditures have almost reached a phenomenal amount, and it's 14 percent remaining budget on the expenditures. We spent actually $1,120,000. I have copies for distribution.
Is there anyone else who would like to make comment before a final vote is taken? Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee. Jones. Please read the bill for a third time.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Mr. Engelhardt?
John Engelmeier. 1281 Graham Road. Three readings tonight. I don't know whether any of you have done your homework, but obviously, it doesn't appear that it has happened. I pulled up the budget information as of September 30 from your records, the city records. We've taken in approximately $373,000 of the $675,000 budget for the golf course, which represents 45 percent. Our expenditures have almost reached a phenomenal amount, and it's 14 percent remaining budget on the expenditures. We spent actually $1,120,000. I have copies for distribution. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment before a final vote is taken? Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bill 9035 passes and becomes ordinance 80818081. Is there anyone else who would like to make comment before a final vote is taken? Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bill 9035 passes and becomes ordinance 80818081. Bill 9036.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $7,000 from account number 0650 professional services, $2,000 to account number 0627 gasoline, and $5,000 to account number 0626 utilities to provide for funding for the balance of the fiscal year for the golf course.
Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $7,000 from account number 0650 professional services, $2,000 to account number 0627 gasoline, and $5,000 to account number 0626 utilities to provide for funding for the balance of the fiscal year for the golf course.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please poll the council for a voice vote.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $7,000 from account number 0650 professional services, $2,000 to account number 0627 gasoline, and $5,000 to account number 0626 utilities to provide for funding for the balance of the fiscal year for the golf course.
Before a final vote is taken in this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Schmidt. Oh, sorry, Pagano. Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bill number 9036 passes and becomes ordinance 80828082. Bill 9037.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 4059 election expense to account number 4023 postage and printing to cover anticipated shortfall in postage for the balance of the fiscal year.
Mr. Lee motions for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroth. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 4059 election expense to account number 4023 postage and printing to cover an anticipated shortfall in postage for the balance of the fiscal year.
I will make a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Caputa. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $15,000 from account number 4059 election expense to account number 4023 postage and printing to cover anticipated shortfall in postage for the balance of the fiscal year.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this issue, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bill 9037 passes and becomes ordinance 80838083. Bill 90389038.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $10,000 from account number 4250 professional services to account number 4227 flirt gasoline to cover gasoline expenses for the health department for the balance of the fiscal year.
Mr. Hernandez makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Hanky. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $10,000 from account number 4250 professional services to account number 4227 flirt gasoline to cover gasoline expenses for the health department for the balance of the fiscal year.
Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council for a third reading.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Please read the bill for a third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $10,000 from account number 4250 professional services to account number 4227 flirt gasoline to cover gasoline expenses for the health department for the balance of the fiscal year.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bill 9038 passes and becomes ordinance 80848084. Bill 9039.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $20,000, $15,000 from account number 0928 merchandise concessions center, and $5,000 from account number 0928 merchandise concessions parks to allow, or to account number 0929 building, maintenance, and supplies parks to cover anticipated expenses for the balance of the fiscal year.
Mr. Shildroth makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Madam Clerk, please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $20,000, $15,000 from account number 0928 merchandise concessions center, and $5,000 from account number 0928 merchandise concessions parks to account number 0929 building, maintenance, and supplies parks to cover anticipated expenses for the balance of the fiscal year.
Mr. Hanky makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Hernandez. Lee.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of a total of $20,000, $15,000 from account number 0928 merchandise concessions center, and $5,000 from account number 0928 merchandise concessions parks to account number 0929 building, maintenance, and supplies parks to cover anticipated expenses for the balance of the fiscal year.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan.
Yes.
Caputa.
Yes.
Shildroth.
Yes.
Hanky.
Yes.
Pagano.
Yes.
Yes.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Hernandez?
Lee?
Jones?
Bill 9039 passes and becomes ordinance 8085, 8085. Bill 9040.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $18,600 from account number 3954 Senior Citizen Lunches to account number 3929 Building Maintenance to cover emergency repairs to the senior center.
Mr. Schmidt makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $18,600 from account number 3954 Senior Citizen Lunches to account number 3929 Building Maintenance to cover emergency repairs for the senior center.
Ms. Pagano makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Hernandez. Any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Hernandez?
Lee?
Jones?
Clerk, please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $18,600 from account number 3954 Senior Citizen Lunches to account number 3929 Building Maintenance to cover emergency repairs to the senior center.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Hernandez?
Lee?
Jones?
Bill number 9040 passes and becomes ordinance 8086, 8086. 9041.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $1,500 from account number 3633 Materials and Supplies to account number 3650 Professional Services for covering the cost of charter connectivity for the balance of the fiscal year.
I will make a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Lee. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Clerk, please read the bill a second time, please.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $1,500 from account number 3633 Materials and Supplies to account number 3650 Professional Services for covering the cost of charter connectivity for the balance of the fiscal year.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, seconded by Mr. Shildroff. Any discussion? Clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Hernandez?
Lee?
Jones?
Madam Clerk, please read the bill for the third time.
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of $1,500 from account number 3633 Materials and Supplies to account number 3650 Professional Services for covering the cost of charter connectivity for the balance of the fiscal year.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Shildroff?
Yes.
Hanky?
Yes.
Pagano?
Schmidt?
Hernandez?
Lee?
Jones?
Bill 9041 passes and becomes ordinance 8087, 8087. Council announcements. Mr. Lee.
Yeah, first of all, I want to apologize. There was some confusion Sunday over which councilperson was taking responsibility for the weather. And in spite of that confusion, I just want to say that Fall Festival is probably, in my opinion, the greatest event we have in the city of Florissant. It's about family, and everybody came out. We had a very good crowd. Particularly, I want to thank Karen Goodwin and the committee members. Karen puts in a lot of time and effort. Mayor, I know you know this, but Bob Laramie, Todd in the Parks Department, and Jeff Peters and the chief made sure that everything went very, very smoothly, and I was very, very pleased with the turnout. I just think it was a great day, you know, once again. Mr. Egan tried warming things up on the street with his fire pit. The fire department did a better job warming things up at the end of the street. For those that were there know what I'm talking about, but it was really, really a good day, and it just makes me proud to be a resident of the city of Florissant. So thanks, everybody, for everything they did.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Shildroff.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to concur with Mr. Lee. I'd like to thank the entire Fall Festival Committee for a great event this year. Despite the weather, I think we still had a really good turnout. I would like to thank, excuse me, I'd like to congratulate BJ's Bar at 184 Washington for being named the best neighborhood bar in North County by the Riverfront Times in their September 25th edition. I'd like to congratulate the entire Russell family and Ward Five resident, Dan Walters, also works there. He's a part-time employee there, and he does a great job. I'd like to welcome Patrick Healy to Ward Five. He just purchased a home on St. Patrice. It's his first home, and he took advantage of our first-time homeowners policy. I coached Pat at St. Thomas apostle along with my son Nathan for many years, and Pat is also employed at Handyman Hardware, and it's, he works and lives in the city where he was raised, and I really am proud of him for staying in Florissant. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Shildroff. Mr. Caputa.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I would like to let everybody know that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so everybody, what you can do for it, try to volunteer, maybe donate some money to breast cancer, and hopefully they can get a cure for this. And another thing, I've been noticing a lot about, on the notables, that a lot of people's cars been broken into due to being unlocked. So make sure, everybody, all the residents, that their vehicles are locked, because half of them, there's nothing being stolen from them, or just the cars are being ransacked because they're open. So make sure you lock your vehicles at night, and we can prevent 90 percent of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caputa. Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mr. Jones. I want to echo what the other council folks said about the Fall Festival. What an awesome event. And I hesitate to thank people because you're going to forget somebody, but everyone who was involved, and they know who they are, did just a banner job. I do know who took credit for the weather a week before, but I'm not going to leave his name out of it. Number two. The Chili Cook-Off. Once again, I didn't finish in the running. I believe that the winning pot went to Pam Lee and Mark Bellman. I believe that Mr. Shildroff finished second.
No, I did not. The chief did.
The chief, I take it back. Chief Lowry finished second, and where were you, Mr. Shildroff? I was told you were in the running in three. I was, I think I was 17th, so it shows you, there were 17 entries, so. But no one got sick. The other thing I want to bring up is the Race to the Shrine is in two weeks. It's going to be a huge event. RaceToTheShrine.com. It'll be a 5K walk-run through Old Town, kicking off at 4:00 p.m. again on October 25th. If you are interested in volunteering, or showing up, or running or walking, RaceToTheShrine.com. And that's all I have. Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your efforts on the 5K run. It's a new event. It's always hard to get a new event off the ground, and I think it's going to be a lot of fun. It's going to be something that we'll probably repeat every year, and I'm just looking forward to it. A long time ago, we had a bike race in Old Town, Florissant. It was pretty well-received, and that was a very, very long time ago, probably 40 years ago, but it was, it's nice to have something back in Old Town in a competitive fashion. The Food Truck Night that was canceled because of bad weather is going to be this coming Thursday, October 16th, at the Knights Grounds, starting at 5:00 p.m., and some of the proceeds will be going to TEAM, the Emergency Assistance Ministry, and we also encourage patrons to bring canned goods or dried food items to donate to TEAM that evening. We're going to also be supporting Soldiers Wish List, Wish List. We're going to have a collection. We have a collection thing here at the reception desk. We'll be collecting until November 10th, and the items that are needed for the soldiers overseas are CDs, DVDs, handheld games, board games, sports items, like football, baseballs, stuff like that. Twin sheets, sets of pillowcases, flannels for Afghanistan, coffee with creamers and sugars, watches, white and black socks, T-shirts, and all different sizes. So if you can help the soldiers out, we have a collections point here right at City Hall. We'll also be collecting at Egan Center and at JFK. We had our annual Senior Town Hall meeting last month. It was very well-attended, along with two community meetings, an east side at the Egan Center and a west side at JFK. Those were also well-attended. We honored a resident, Charlotte Ballard, in our Walk Through History last month, and she was a citizen who had a business here in Florissant. She's the second female to be so honored. And pretty soon, we're also going to honor Rosemary Davison. We're saddened to announce that she passed away, and we're going to have a memorial service for her this Saturday at the shrine. She was, she was the most responsible for the historical preservation of our heritage here in Florissant by preserving historically significant buildings and also by writing about our history. She wrote the book Florissant, Missouri, published in 2002. So we commissioned another plaque for her. She'll be the third female honored in our Walk Through History. Probably, what I'm thinking of is trying to do it on the evening where we have the Mass on St. Philippines Feast Day, if I get the cooperation from all the different historical groups that would like to recognize Rosemary. But Saturday at, from 10 o'clock at the shrine is going to be a memorial service for one of Florissant's great pioneers. She was one of the authors of the, she was on the Board of Freeholders that wrote our current charter, and she was our city clerk from 1963 until 1979. Thank you.
The next meeting of the Florissant City Council will be held on October 27th, 2014, at 7:30 p.m. Mr. Hanky motions to adjourn this meeting. It's seconded by Mr. Hernandez. All in favor? Aye. The council will stand adjourned.